Close, really close.
Would anybody stand for the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all? We'll call the meeting order, roll call.
Mayor Westegard.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Okay, no public forum consent agenda, any additions or corrections? So, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Frank.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Landis Corral's gonna close Fourth Street again for a bank tournament. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Roll call.
Wolman.
Yep.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
We have two building permits that have been approved and signed.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
I'll make it.
Second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
We also have a building permit from Mike and Elaine Robinson.
Fensbury.
Fensbury, there you go. Motion to approve that.
I'll make it.
Second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Mulder.
Yes.
Administrator report.
Couple things tonight. First thing is about Alatoni. And give you an update about our developers and where they are with that. You know, they had put a lot of effort into their attempt to get some workforce housing tax credits that would really help them on the financial side of doing the project. They were not awarded those tax credits. Now, so that causes them to step back a little bit and see where they're at, but they very much are still committed to the project. They very much still want this to happen. It may happen now in phases instead of all happening at once to where they might look at, say, six units the first year and then so many subsequent to the second year, whether this could be a two or three-year project then. So, as you look at the plan that was at your seat here, this is just a grading plan. So, that's the engineer giving their grading plan about what it would look like at the subdivision and then also shows that street in there and the elevation of the street. And this has showed more for concept purposes, you know, maybe than anything else. Just showing you that this still proposes the eight duplexes and the cul-de-sac and everything is still very similar to what was proposed before. When you look at drainage, they changed that drainage a little bit. Look at the green line on the right-hand side to where there's an intake in the street. And so, all those front yards then drain to the street and then the street drains to that intake. In that intake, you see the short green line drains into a little retention cell and then that would hold that water there for a little bit until it gets up to the elevation of the other green line going out, which would have the water then draining to the ditch out there on the north. So, the remainder of that, the backyards, especially the backyards of the north one, you see, based on this grading plan, you can see what the elevations are and how that continues to flow then towards that north ditch. So, just several things to think about as they proceed with the project. And, you know, one of them that they still need to define and nail down for sure is whether this is all going to be rental properties or if they're again gonna look at some owner-occupied stuff. And they have indicated when I talked with Paul that they might look at some owner-occupied stuff that they would turn around and sell then. That impacts the subdivision. If they're gonna sell those properties, they gotta plat that, you know, and if it's all rental property, then it would just be this one parcel. So, the plan you're looking at is just one large parcel. So, that comes into being. And then, the bigger question then is if they look at a phased project, what can be done about infrastructure? Because we're still very likely having to put in all of the infrastructure at the beginning of what would be a phased project. So, would the city have some requirements about that, about, you know, whether they might file a bond or Paul even suggested maybe that there'd be some type of an escrow fund or something like that to assure that the projects are completed? So, we can continue to talk about that.
So, did they give you any kind of timeline, what they were hoping for or guess at or...
To start in spring and look at at least three of these duplex units, then right away in spring. Okay? And the slow one, the slow plan says do three this year, do three next year, do three the following year. But as they get these three belts right away this spring and determining how they fill up or sell, can have some impact about how quickly they turn over the next one.
So, how long would it take us to get our part of the infrastructure done? Wouldn't that be, wouldn't we have to start something?
Yeah, you know, we're responsible for a portion of the cost of the infrastructure, which basically means put all of the infrastructure in and we're responsible for a portion of that. We would get plans done here throughout the winter and get that thing bid right away for springtime construction.
We need to modify our development agreement.
Yeah, so we have this development agreement with them that defines the project and I think we wanna revisit that about what the project looks like. Even within the development agreement, it says there's a fourplex or a triplex or a duplex or, excuse me, fourplex or duplexes or single family and they're looking really at the duplexes now. And then, but mainly timeline. You know, the timeline within the development agreement said most of them constructed during this year during '22 and then some constructed in '23. So, we would need to revisit the timeline in that development agreement.
They're also responsible up here on Seventh Street, aren't they, for the duplex that...
There, yep.
That was supposed to happen this year?
They had their permit for that one. That one was ready to go.
Yeah?
Yep. And I haven't heard anything on that too about what the timing is on that.
I got one other comment about Alatoni. What's happening with the weeds and the rest of the cleanup?
Yep.
Is that an eyesore?
Yeah, so I talked with Paul about that and that they would get on that and attend to the weeds and work with that contractor about finishing up the project cleanup at least. And really, as far as any definitive timeline on that, Mike, I don't have anything definitive, but we've talked about it and they were following through with it.
So, send them a reminder of some sort.
Sure.
Didn't the one guy just lose his wife or something?
Yeah, and that's...
Maybe he's slowing things up.
It, and we were, yeah, I guess wanted to be respectful about that for a while. The next thing that I had listed on the administrator report is Sac County Endowment Foundation grants. Those grant applications are gonna be due on November 4th. And I know that the Community Center Committee would look at putting forth a grant application on that. That application historically has been around 25,000 has been the maximum on that. And when they put in that application, it just needs to be for a defined portion of what would be done. In this case, what we would apply for is site grading. So, we would do the site grading that dovetails into this project with the big retention bases there to do the green infrastructure project then too. So, that would be the idea there.
Why are we sticking any more money into that project when we don't have numbers in front of us yet that we asked for six months ago?
Yeah. Any update on that, on where you're at?
Well, you've known Kevin Smith all your life. You probably could get him to give us an answer. He's been giving us a price. Well, we can't apply for any more grants unless we get a contractor's price for that in mechanical electric only. He just hasn't got it back to us. As we're waiting.
But what's, I mean, we've got the other estimates, what it's gonna cost and they're three and four times over what was estimated. So, I mean, I think we're just bucking a dead horse and I don't see where we need to be sticking any more money into site grading or anything else. Grants aren't free. They come at a cost. There's no such thing in this world as free money. I mean, you might get 25,000, but what's it gonna cost us on the back end?
Just understanding again that it'd be $25,000, say, in a grant. There's some in-kind contributions from a contractor who would do some of the dirt work for us. But the other main thing is to dovetail it in with this green infrastructure project where we do have the, this, it's about a hundred and, let me tell you, Mike, I don't know the number for sure, 120,000, something like that on the grant for the green infrastructure to do this big retention basin out there.
Because whatever goes out there, we know we have water problems out there. So, we're trying to do the grading in that DNR retention pond to save. When we get big rains to go into the docket, it does even those new homes. If this falls through, at least we've got that done.
So, I wanna talk about maybe switching gears. Can that endowment fund be for upgrades of the mini golf?
Yeah, so as you look at, yeah, a couple of other projects that we could look at. And I would tell you, we would look at submitting two applications. Historically, we've submitted two applications probably every year. And I know the community center's gonna be real interested in submitting an application where we can look at improvements to the mini golf course. Or the other thing that had come to mind right quick is the new digital sign. And that's how that was funded originally, was half paid for by a grant for the, to purchase that sign originally. And it's probably about time for a new one of those. Another thing that I want to point out to you and throw this out there as a different option. On page 21 of your packet, our Housing and Economic Development Committee is starting to work on a signage project around town, directing people around town and redoing some of our wayfinding signage and road. What they wanna do is, one of the stuffs they want to highlight is to be able to get downtown. That sign on 21 there would be a proposed sign to go in the case of the sign that's out there at the old drive-in. You know, Bob Moore owns the old A and W there. And this would be the proposed sign that would go there. Now, having said that, know that the existing pole is in terrible condition and basically this would just be a brand-new sign and pole on this existing site. I got the cost estimate on the sign and that would be around $6,000 plus pole. So, look at that as an option too.
Do we have to get that okay through the DOT?
No, it's private property.
Okay.
So, really, we'd be working with Bob Moore on that. And Jackie Wallace has really been the lead on this and she's been dealing with Bob on that.
Okay.
Go ahead, interested in your thoughts on that too and whether that is a potential grant project or whether that's a potential project to do, to be able to help with along the way. Cost was a little bit more than what I would have anticipated.
Do you have a cost estimate on our new digital sign?
Yes. Dale had quoted that and it was 41,000, is that what it was?
Over and paid 50 for theirs.
I guess my idea on the mini golf is, number one, we know that's in really, really poor shape.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay? And number two, that's the only one of the ideas that's an income generator.
That's true.
So, and Connie brought it up to our attention, you know, with pictures and stuff not that long ago. Yeah, and to me, it's something that needs to be started next spring. What does that, would that get awarded?
It will be, you know, Christmas time-ish.
Yeah.
That we know for sure.
So, you know, again, that push for that project is probably the number one.
Yeah.
You know, because number one, it's in pretty bad shape and it's an income generator.
Yeah.
The dollar amount was...
The dollar amount.
We got, I gotta get that all quoted out before we can submit the grant.
I think we should take a look at the whole thing.
The main thing is the carpet replacement, well, that'll cost a lot of dollars.
But I'm thinking, taking a look at the whole thing.
We need a bridge that needs to come out and the broch redone.
Yeah.
That was talked about doing this fall and...
So, we do have a little update on that.
I talked to Willie. He's out of Sac City. He grinds stuff. He's got a crane. He's gonna have it down there, I believe, in a week or two to lift that out and set it off to the side.
All right.
I mean, also looking at anything else that needs to be...
Yeah, if we're tearing...
Right, right.
Right, if we're tearing into it, let's...
Yeah.
See what else we can do.
Let's not live ourselves. It's been done all the way through.
Right.
Sounds good. Yeah, nope, I agree. Oh, God, I'm afraid I got a long list of things tonight, but...
Well, we were moving right through this, so...
How about hybrid testing, Dean? And what you were at on hybrid?
We started hybrid testing in flows and flushing, of course. We got half the town done and then we had our little incident out to, out by Whitey's area with a sewer. That took three days. Got back into it, started doing the other half of part of the town and then our, one of them either got a chunk of sediment in it, so now it'll lock up. I called the company and they told me how to tear it apart a little bit and then I said, well, do you have a loner? Maybe you can send it back to see if maybe it's a bearing out of it already. And he said, I'll let you know. And he hasn't come back yet. That was a Friday. So, we haven't got them all flushed yet.
How's the pressure coming, what you expecting?
I, Tommy's got that on his phone right now. Because it's all Bluetooth and it's Bluetooth to his phone, so if you're driving around and they're flushing hydrants and you see Tommy looking at his phone, it's because that's Bluetoothing to his phone, so.
Then you got some hydrants lined up?
I got three coming out of Omaha so that we can probably get, hopefully get those three hydrants out to Provo's done. I checked with Browns and they still haven't got their shipment yet. And they just keep, every month, it keeps putting off a month. And so, I called down to Municipal Supply and he didn't have any in Des Moines. We're in his territory. Omaha has them. We're not in Omaha's territory, but we can run down and get them from them instead of... Something about Municipal Supply, they don't, the stores don't even work together. So, but I got three of them, the three that we need to get those back running.
Do we have to put shut offs on each one?
Put shut offs on each one.
A little expensive.
Yeah, it is.
One other thing, water and waste rider related deals with certification of operators. Okay? So, we had sent in notice that our operator was changing. Dean is the operator and we have so long to get Dean certified to be grade two and everything. And they asked us for a plan on that. We sent in a plan that said that we would have this done within the year period that it was required. DNR has put the clamps down a lot harder on this for us and for, really, for other folks also. So, long story short, I heard back from their guy and they said, no, we can't go for a year. I said, okay, let's do six months. And then it was two or three weeks later, he called back again and said, you need to have your guys basically certified by the end of the year.
I talked to Tommy. Tommy's grade one distribution. He's gonna go for his grade two distribution. I have my test at the end of this month to get my grade two water. And we hope that'll satisfy them a little bit that we're really working on it, then I can turn around and go right to my grade two wastewater and then we'll be all satisfied.
So, yeah.
All right.
That'll be a lot, well, it'll be a lot more aggressive than what we had hoped, but in the, it's actually not a bad thing. We just gotta get it done.
Well, this should've been done already, right, by your contract.
A couple of other things that Ten Point had started, that pavement replacement on the road around the lake, so they're working south of Grand Oaks right now and then we also look at the east side of the lake. The green dump truck sold on big iron, $9,500. So, that, I think we're pretty happy with the sale on that. Couple of upcoming things. We will have our annual Progresses Promised meeting and encourage the, well, the mayor will be there for sure, and then encourage all of the council members to come to this also on Saturday, October 22nd. It's in the library meeting room. And we just go through all of the, all the good accomplishments that the community has done for the past year and we hand out community awards and that type of stuff. And then there's a chili cook-off for lunch. So, bring your best bag of chili.
Where, where are the chili? Where are the chili?
Wednesday, there's a conference I'll be attending. It's just down in Templeton on Vibrant Rural Communities. That's on Wednesday. And Sac County League meets next Thursday. So, it's Thursday, the 13th, and that's up at Cavillton in Sac City. That's it.
Okay. Orders five twenty-three, this is our second reading of the fences.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
We're gonna make a motion, we wave it there. Second.
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Wolman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
We don't need one more for something?
That's done. The kind one will be done now.
Okay. Orders five twenty-four is our garbage rates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty-two twenty-seven.
This is on that Highway 175 water main project. I just wanna highlight a couple of things for you. So, the really good news is that our grant funders are completely on board with everything. They've given us the go-ahead to go ahead and bid that. The bid package is basically ready to go. And I wanna go through a couple of things that start on page eight. And this is just the notice to bidders, but I just wanna highlight a couple of things for you. So, bid date on this would be October 31st. So, we'd do two o'clock in the afternoon on October 31st. And then it gives us then the remainder of that week before the council meeting, following Monday. To confirm all the bids, make sure that everything's ready to go for the council the following Monday. You see how the project is described in the middle of the page there about this, construct the Highway 175 water main, 6,018 linear feet of 12-inch water main. A couple other things then. Bid security shows at the bottom of, bottom paragraph there, page eight, bid security would be 5% or they need to supply a bid bond. And then on page nine is the bottom paragraph there too about the successful bidder needing to furnish a bond and this is 100% of contract price. It's a construction and maintenance bond, okay? And then maintenance, the term of the maintenance bond then is for four years. Okay, work, I'm talking to the federal work would be completed by June 30 of '23 and liquidated damages of $500 per day. And the one thing that's unique, because this is financed by the Economic Development Administration, a large grant from them, is the retainage on the project being 10%, which Iowa has a state law that establishes maximum retainage at 5% unless there's other laws that are in conflict of that. So, we will, in this case, withhold 10% for retainage. So, that would be the notice to bidder. And as you flip to the next page is the resolution that would order the construction and approve the preliminary plans and approve the taking of bids on the project. Did you get a chance to take a look at the plans? I know we kinda went through them before and really, nothing significant had changed on them. 12-inch water main running on the north side of the highway.
Yep.
Okay?
We have a motion to approve twenty-two twenty-seven.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Now, with that then, if I can, one second here, about the timeline then for the Northwest Loop project. Okay, so we do want to go ahead and quote that project. It's a small enough project that we can competitively quote that. Veenstrom Kim is taking care of that project for us too, so they would get the quote packages out mainly to whomever is interested, but mainly the same people who are gonna quote that evap quote. So, we're gonna propose that the bids on that would be due on the Thursday then, following the Monday when the evap line bids would be open. So, the, we'll have everything in line then to determine whether that same contractor would like to bid on the smaller Northwest Loop project then too. So, that's falling into line and everything looks pretty good there. Is there any questions on that project? We do, the plans have the fire hydrant in north of the school and have the fire hydrant looped out to Jackson Street.
Okay, annual financial report.
Yeah, it's just the cover page of what will be, this will be printed in the paper. The auditor was here a couple of weeks ago, went through this and she agrees with the report as I had presented and it's ready for approval.
Motion to approve.
I'll make it.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Stankin.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Okay, our annual urban renewal project.
Yeah, same on that. This is the annual report that we need to file and does require city council approval. But a couple of things that we highlight, on page 14 is where this starts. Just the highlighted line there at the bottom middle shows what the cash fund balance is in TIF fund, $462,000. And as you look at the page 15, these are the projects for which we spent money here the past year. Still paying debt on the Sac Beach infrastructure. We paid that incentive to Jacobson for their project. The evap internal loan was phase one of the water main work out there. And then the community center about having those obligations out there. And on the next page, it shows the amounts spent during the year and there was 24,000 spent on the community center and that's that engineer.
I thought we spent 50,000 on purchase of the land.
That, that wouldn't show up with TIF money. That was purchased with donations.
Foundation, figure for that.
True. Yeah.
We have a motion to approve the annual urban renewal.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Mulder.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolman. Frank.
Yes.
Okay, the CDBG housing grant program.
Yeah, we're getting down to the end on this. This bill is basically for administration there to region 12, but we would ask to approve the putting in of the draw request to the state and then separate motion to pay the bill.
Motion to approve the request. So moved. Second.
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Wolman.
Yep.
Stankin.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the payment. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Wolman.
Yes.
Mulder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Okay, Lake Shore Drive project.
There we go.
Ready? Couple changes we wanna highlight?
Well, I'd like to say we had a pretty good meeting Saturday with the property. Couple of main things that came up that got added into the new estimate for tonight was the water main. Right now, I've got it in here, an estimate to replace that with two in. And I'll have to get the specs on the material and then if we proceed. And I'll have to get the specs on the material and then if we proceed. I thought you might be still gonna verify?
I will verify, I'll knock out, I'll check the cement there by Kenobi's.
Yeah.
Back down, see what it actually is.
Okay. But I projected about 175 feet to get past that fifth curb side. And that's where you think it did, then?
Yeah, that's what our map says.
Somebody just got a little carried away with the paint.
Mm-hmm.
Might've been one of our guys, I don't know.
Nope. It's one of my guys.
Not a problem. And then the second thing that we talked about was on the south end, there's some additional cracking that happened on the older pavement. And the discussion, well, we got into this discussion because we talked about at least replacing the two panels next to the intake, which is not, it has actually shown on this drawing, if you can see that little blue rectangle on the south end?
Mm-hmm.
About where that intake is. And talked about replacing a 30-inch wide strip on each side of that. But then we got to looking at the existing cracks, the random cracks in about 69 feet in total from the end of that pavement where our project starts to the south. A couple of the panels wouldn't have to come out in total because the crack is just on one half of it. So I had a calculation on if we left in, I think there's like two of them that we could save half of the panel or about eight feet. And I came up with about 83 square yards. So that, I don't know if everybody was actually in on this discussion with the mayor and seems like Dean, I don't remember if you got in on that, but we talked about taking an alternate add-on bid at the time of the letting. And see what the pavement is going for and see if they'll add on this 83 square yards at a reasonable price. If it's not, if it's too expensive, the council will have the option of adding it or not at that time. So I put that up at the bottom, alternate add-on number one, removing the place broken panels. And I should've had 69, I was just adding it up before the discussion here. 69 instead of 62 from the measurements on Saturday. So, we would have some subgrade compaction and removal of the pavement in the 70s concrete. So I took, then I took the total and I added the same engineering estimate, the engineering. A lot of times what we do is we construction engineering by the hour, but we do want to go with the cap also for our council courses, but that's quite an estimating, we can still get the project done for $2,950. That'd just be 15. First one's come out at 15.9% and the second one, it would be going degrees for letting on that 83 yards and just be part of the project. We'll do about the same amount of work on the plans and, you know, it would be done within a couple of days, so I just need the same amount of work. So, with, I guess backing up first of all with the... Actually, I got the title wrong in there in the middle, I should've... I said alternate add-on bid, I should've said retaining wall, the short retaining wall, that's at $5232. Total amount of the project looking engineering estimated at $152,557. Of course, we add on the 83 square yards of removing and replacing existing concrete from the older project. Your total would be about $160,200. When we get finished, the council wants to proceed and we do the detailed plan, we'll have a final election. Probably a little closer to, than I stand to us, some of these quantities aren't necessarily exact than when you get it designed. And I still believe I have some numbers on the high side. So, I truly think that we'll be able to get the project, even if we get the whole plan, we should get the project, you know, around $170,000.
So, a couple of things, first of all, we budgeted $150,000 per project, so we're right around the ballpark. And the other thing about that retaining wall or that middle section there is that this includes replacement of that entire retaining wall then in back of Garret's. So it goes into that, the new pavement several feet and replaces that whole thing, so it's a consistent looking wall the entire way.
Is the one behind them Blake's, too, then, or just behind Garret's?
Just behind Garret's. Blake's want to tear that out.
They're gonna tear that out.
They're gonna make an aggregate parking area.
It goes about 33 feet into the old project. Back to about the beginning of the project.
Still solid. Yeah. Yeah, just, I think really what...
Pretty concerned about getting that straight. We contacted our representative, he's gonna get it straight back in here.
Really just looking for a little guidance to know for sure that the city council is on board with replacing the wall and adding that to the project. And then also the bidding, this extra pavement then is an alternate. We can have them prepare the bid specs for you.
Terry, I'm just wondering, the two strips we talked about replacing because of crack it up and then we went to spider it out of that in certain spots. Did you think some of that problem was compacted right? Or what's your thoughts on that? Compaction was?
That is one recent concrete trap like that. If the subgrade is not all the same compaction and the same density and you get a larger load come over like a garbage truck and weight that down, you can match the crack from that.
So, we always have problems in one area if you don't compact it right or you don't... How would you approach that, I guess?
If we do the alternate add-on, that'll be torn out and then there's a night in the near for special compaction of the subgrade, so that would all be fixed.
They get out, repack it?
Yeah, they do, we've got on there 12 inches of subgrade compaction, so they actually gotta take six inches material out and then work the substances underneath of that, get it to density. I won't bore you with all the details, but 95% of what can be obtained and all that before, we call it 95% of standard proper. We can tell that and my guys don't test it, it depends on if we hire a testing firm like Certified Testing, a store like... Usually, we work with somebody like that that can just zip in here and take a nuclear density and have the answer right there at the table. We also have ways of taking densities with our firm, but we haven't done them for a while, because we have firms like Certified Testing, like...
They do compaction all the way in the street, everything? We had a little trouble before, we didn't...
Yep, this entire, yeah, this entire project would have special compaction.
I would think you'd wanna do it right at the first back point.
Oh, yeah.
It won't even matter, it's gonna cost a bit.
Once the lower, I didn't finish, once the lower layer is confirmed and approved, they put the other material in and give it a grain, that's really my thought, that's the only way to go. Because if you skimp on that, you just take that chance of ending up with some actual project.
That's why I was asking about compaction because we've had that problem, so we don't need another one like it.
That was tough.
But just to know for sure and make sure that everybody is aware of this, then, if they talk about putting aggregate under the street, this is not proposed, put aggregate under it. And this would just recompact the existing subgrade and it's no aggregate that goes underneath.
But you pack it down.
Sometimes you have to add some material and that'll be part of the plan. But I've got enough in the estimate for that.
So what kind of motion do you need to move forward?
Um, just, yeah, we just have a motion, I think, to include the wall in the project and bid the additional pavement as an alternate. And Terry, you can add his marching orders and we know how to proceed.
Order the motion. Roll call.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that motion?
Yeah.
Make the motion that we include the wall and the prepares of the...
I didn't quite hear a break, so...
Thank you.
Nothing different.
It kicked out.
It kicked out, right by your ear.
All right. Okay. Holtman.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bodler.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Thanks for... Would you find another...
Yeah, appreciate it.
Go back and get the storm. Very good to see how soon we can go back and schedule a meeting this time.
That's okay, Kenny?
Good.
All right.
Thanks, Kenny.
Thank you.
You have a motion to adjourn?
Yo.
Second. Need to adjourn.
I wanted to say I was there for a second. Yo, yo.
That's usually a daze, yo.